Good evening. I would like to call this meeting of the Rules and Reference Committee to order. As required by charter, this public hearing is to solicit feedback from members of the public and hear from the finalists being considered for former President Pro Tem Elizabeth Brown's open seat. All finalists have been invited to speak, but it is not a requirement. There are eight finalists here that are before us for consideration. We have Ulubumi Adek-Kambi, Eli Bonhardt, Mitchell J. Brown, Ilhan Daher, Lucy Getman, Kelly Lombardo Matthews, Charity Martin King, and Denzel Portis. I outlined the timeline for this appointment process in a memo dated November 16, 2022. Applicants emailed their resume to councilvacancy@columbus.gov between Tuesday, November 29th and Friday, December 9th. On Wednesday, December 21st, after reviewing all applications, materials, and conducting individual interviews as they saw fit, each member of council submitted the names of up to three applicants that would be considered finalists. The clerk compiled and shared the names of the finalists with the members of council and immediately notified the finalists and the community. Tonight, we will hear from the finalists as in alphabetical order based on last name. Then we'll hear from public speakers based on when they submitted their request to speak. At the conclusion of the hearing this evening, council will enter into executive session to discuss candidates and public testimony that we heard this evening. We are not allowed and there will be no straw polls or votes taken in that executive session. Monday, January 9th, 2023, at 5:00 p.m., during the regular council meeting, council members shall nominate applicants for the vacancy and vote to appoint a new member. If a majority of council members vote to appoint a nominee, he or she will then be eligible to be sworn in under the oath and take office pursuant to Section 5 of the City Charter and Section 111.35 of Columbus City Code. It's really important that we thank all the applicants, the 27 that put their names forward, certainly the eight that are still in consideration. In this time where public services is looked down upon, when division is leaned into, 27 folks from our community raised their hand and said they would like to serve. And for that, I think I speak on behalf of this entire body, we say thank you and mean that seriously and hold heartily. I'm going to open up to colleagues if there are any comments that council members want to make before we get going in the with the hearing. Councilmember.
I just wanted to echo your first of all to say thank you. Thank you to everyone who raised their hand and said, yes, I want to do this. I want to do this work, especially during this time. I mean, it's never easy to serve, but I think especially now when there feels like such uncertainty and we're trying to find a new normal in so many different ways, the fact that folks raise their hands. I also want to thank all the friends and family who are here to support you today that are lifting your names up, both to the 27 who applied, but certainly to the eight that are here today. Years ago, I sat in these same seats and I know how nerve-wracking this can be. I know how exciting it can be. And our hope is that this is the beginning of a much longer conversation that we continue to have and a much longer partnership that we continue to have because by raising your hand, it's not just saying, I want to serve in this seat, but you want to serve this community in another way, in the way that many of you continue to serve. So, thank you. I look forward to hearing from you and from the community members that are joining us this evening and look forward to partnering with you to make a better, stronger Columbus for all of us.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Well said. Just a reminder, applicants, finalists were not required to be here. And with that, our first applicant, Lubumi, was not let us know that she was not able to attend this evening, and that's perfectly fine. And we've received support information on her behalf. So, the next applicant, finalist in that order is Eli Bonhardt. Welcome to council, and we will just say, if you keep your remarks to three minutes, we'd love to hear from you.
Council President Harden, members of council, deeply honored to be considered for this appointment, but I'd like to start with some important thank yous. To former President Pro Tem Brown, thank you for your service to the city and for the example you have set for all of us. Your impact on this city is going to be felt for many years, and you have left very large shoes to fill. As a gay man, I want to thank Council President Harden, Auditor Kilgore, and the other openly LGBTQ elected officials in Columbus. Your strength to live authentically and serve gives me the courage to want to do the same. I'd also like to thank the countless people who have supported, guided, and believed in me. Without the support of this community, I wouldn't be before you right now. When I look to the challenges that are facing Columbus, I don't just see abstract issues or statistics. When we're talking about the rising cost of housing in the city, it's personal. As a young person starting out in a rapidly growing city, the cost of rent is a struggle every month. Over 40% of my income goes to pay my rent every month. So, when we're talking about being rent burdened or the rent being too high, I live that every day. Improving public transit, building community centers in underserved regions like the West Side, exploring diverse housing options, and tackling gun violence are my top priorities. I look at these challenges as opportunities, opportunities to come together as a city, opportunities to sustain existing partnerships and build new partnerships, to figure out how we can improve life for everyone in Columbus, no matter which neighborhood they live in. If appointed as caretaker for this seat, I would jump in on day one to join with the rest of council in supporting projects that are underway to make this city better. Local government, more so than any other level of government, has the most impact on people's day-to-day life. Council members have the unique opportunity to be in the community every day to understand what is working and what isn't working, and I pledge to do just that. Thank you for the opportunity to appear this evening and share my vision for our city. To all of the other applicants, thank you for having the courage to stand up for your city and being willing to serve.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bonhardt. Thank you. The next finalist that will come before council is Mitchell J. Brown. Welcome back to council.
Good evening. Good evening, Council President, members of City Council. It's different to be back in City Hall from this perspective. As all of you know, I served for a long, long time sitting in that chair right there, addressing City Council and then serving on City Council. To give a brief statement, my name is Mitchell J. Brown. I'm here this evening to share with you why I'm interested in fulfilling the unexpired term of Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Most of you present are aware of my extensive and lengthy background as a public servant, which is over 50 years. And you also know that I retired from City Council just a year ago. Since that time, I've had an addition to my family, a beautiful granddaughter, which I am enjoying immensely. And I've been consulting on the history of pre-hospital emergency medical services throughout the United States. A few weeks ago, I was approached and asked to consider returning to council to serve the last year of Councilor Elizabeth Brown's term. After a long discussion with my family, I agreed to submit my resume for consideration, replacing one Brown with another. I have a complete understanding of how City Council operates and, if selected, look forward to working closely with the Council President and all the members of council to fulfill the objectives that you have prepared for the 2023. I had a closing statement, but I don't know if I will make it or not. It had to do with the fact that my name is Mitchell Brown, but I think my real name is Fran Ryan. Those of you on council will appreciate that. Again, I would like to say to all those who have participated in this process, say thank you. It's really important to show an interest in participating in running city government. And the fact that you had all these individuals to submit their names is very, very special. And I would only say to all of you, we have an exciting year ahead of us in so many ways, and this council is going to play an integral part in continuing to make Columbus the best place to live, to work, to raise a family, and to have fun. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Brown. The next finalist to come before council is Ilhan Daher.
Dear City Council members, colleagues, friends, and members of the public, I am honored to be standing before you to put myself forward as the candidate to fill the vacant City Council seat for this great city of Columbus, my home and the city that my parents immigrated to, to give me and my sisters the chance at the greatest life that they could imagine. I'm a Buckeye, a Rhodes Scholar, a security strategist, a White House champion of change, and a political advisor that would bring nearly a decade of diverse work to the City Council. I live and was raised in the second district on the West Side, and at a very early age, I became familiar with the local politics here in Columbus in this chamber as a part of Mayor Coleman's Youth Council. When the news of this vacancy was presented to me by community members that are familiar with the educational programming and community organizing work that I do here in central Ohio, I was immediately interested for two reasons. The first is the promise of local politics that our colleagues have already spoken about, especially in a country that is increasingly gridlocked on the national level. And secondly, because I believe in this growing and dynamic city, a city that I believe is the foundation for much of the work that I have been able to accomplish and much of the promise that I see in a brighter future for this city, this state, and this country. I'm intimately familiar with the growth that central Ohio has seen over the past 20 years, having seen it on the West Side. Our growth as a city comes with its own challenges, however. Within these challenges, there is a promise for transformative work, including the issues of housing and creating affordable options for citizens to own a home, robust public transit system, which I've discussed with a few of you, economic security for families across this city, and all of these issues being interconnected in ways that I believe that my background in policy will really help to substantiate. Although my home and roots are here in Columbus, if appointed for this role, I would be the first Somali-American on the Columbus City Council, an honor and a responsibility that I would not take lightly, presenting an opportunity both for the city and for the council to support one of the largest immigrant populations in this city that helps shape its identity and that will help propel it forward. Today, I bring my expertise, my passion, and skills to this council where I can support a shared vision for a city that embraces its strength and diversity and continue to propel forward the work that is begun by this council, working intimately on issues of housing, transportation, and immigration. I would provide a wealth of knowledge on economic prosperity initiatives, public health-related programming, and expansion of neighborhood-specific needs in line with the creation of the new nine districts. The responsibility that has defined my life thus far, to leave this earth more just and more equitable than I found it, remains central to my identity as a person and a citizen of this country and a resident of this great city and hopefully tomorrow as a colleague on this council. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Daher. The next finalist to come before council is Lucy Getman. Welcome back to council.
President Harden and members of City Council, thank you for this opportunity to speak to my commitment to the city of Columbus as a finalist for the unexpired term. I'm Lucy Getman, and you have my written testimony, so I will briefly summarize. While thinking about the year ahead for City Council in Columbus, I'm reminded of the 2022 movie Everything Everywhere All at Once. You may recall that the key characters are struggling with the challenges that come with daily life, including families, businesses, personal and mental health, social justice, and even the role of government. And spoiler alert for those who haven't seen it, the villain is the IRS. In 139 action-packed minutes, the movie portrays multiple and simultaneous versions of the characters' experience, hence the title, Everything Everywhere All at Once, and it's not unlike the myriad of issues that come before City Council. While the movie doesn't neatly solve all these problems, it illustrates that it takes all of us working together. Considering the changes in the landscape in Washington, D.C., with Congress being sworn in today, changes at the state level, we must all indeed work together. Columbus has already been identified as one of North America's most future-ready cities by Thought Lab. As council prepares for a new structure in 2024, I'm prepared to be the experienced caretaker in 2023. I bring a lifetime of leadership experience as a community volunteer with the YWCA and others, neighborhood commission representative, legislative staff at the State House, a role on Capitol Hill as a public policy advocate and government relations professional, and a college instructor. I held nonprofit leadership roles for three national associations and served education professionals, locally-elected school board members, and most recently as executive director of a national association by and for women state legislators. I've impacted issues including early childhood education, child nutrition, ed tech, teacher prep, and professional development, and access to post-secondary education. I've taught and mentored high school students and college students and mentored young professionals in order to foster civic participation, gender parity, and to fan the flames of political engagement. I've fostered public-private partnerships and encouraged diversity, equity, and inclusion in these settings. As a member of council, I will apply the depth and breadth of these experiences to prepare for the new political landscape ahead. I look forward to paying forward to serving the city of Columbus and, again, express my gratitude for Everything Everywhere All at Once.
Thank you so much. The next finalist to come before council is Kelly Lombardo Matthews. Kelly, welcome to council.
My name is Kelly Lombardo Matthews, and I'm honored to be here with you. Thank you for this opportunity to share a bit about me and why I wish to serve with City Council for this one-year term. My parents are both teachers in central Ohio, and they modeled a life of service for their children, so I learned early that choosing to serve will sustain me and bring me great joy in my life. Like my parents, I've served the youth of Columbus, ensuring that young people have access to experiences that are positive and enriching. As a former high school teacher, a director of an international exchange program, and as a coordinator of educational program at our yearly Italian festival, I've also facilitated conversations about intercultural competence and community, which are critical for the healthy development of our young people as members of this diverse society. I've also served some of our most vulnerable populations, our sick and our elderly, with Columbus nonprofits Hope Hollow and Life Care Alliance, working to ensure equitable access to lodging, meals, transport, and healthcare. And I'm proud of this work to provide for the most basic needs of our neighbors, which is necessary to strengthen our city and protect our most vulnerable residents. Recently, as a fellow of the inaugural Circle Program with Greater Columbus Sister Cities International, I served our city in a new way, representing Columbus on an official delegation to Genoa, Italy. In meetings with the mayor of Genoa, with leading academics, and more, it was clear that Columbus is a valuable and valued global presence. This is part of what already makes us special, and I want to be part of this continued commitment to celebrating and strengthening a diverse and welcoming city. By virtue of my recent work with Sister Cities, I've also learned much more about the challenges we face and the good work that is being done to address these challenges. I'm committed to seeing the city grow and change, and I want to be a part of the progress and solutions that our city is working toward. That's what brings me here today. I'm searching for the next role that I'll play in service to our city and our neighbors. Columbus is where my husband and I are raising our daughter. It's where I grew up. It's where I studied, received a master's degree from Ohio State. It's where I've worked, started my own business, where I volunteer, and where I now look for opportunities to be an even greater contributor. The opportunity to serve with you on City Council means that I'll have the chance to listen and connect in meaningful ways with residents of the city that we love, in pursuit of solutions and progress as we grow. Ultimately, I'm passionate about any such opportunities that may be available to me to lead with my servant's heart. Once again, it's an honor to be here tonight, and I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. The next finalist to come before council is Charity Martin King. Welcome back to council.
Good evening. Councilmember President, esteemed, esteemed Columbus City Council, it is an honor and a privilege to be back in a different capacity and to be able to address you personally. There are some things that I thought about in preparation, and one of which was preparedness. And then it was performance. And then it was persistence. I have prepared, I have performed, and I have persisted. In these times where our city is fraught with many complex issues, all the way from housing, infant mortality, building neighborhoods, there are so many issues that are confronting us, and I believe that I possess many of the unique skills to be able to serve alongside you as you prepare for a very historic election. I think you're looking for someone who has the experience, the humility, and the ability to work with you and who is able to engage this community and properly convey how our government has changed and how they can get engaged. Preparedness, I grew up on the side of, I always say, Fifth and Cassidy, those who know me and know me well. I came from the Fifth and Cassidy area, grew up around Creme Park, but when I think of those times that I'm the proud daughter of Michael Martin and Dr. Apollo Stevens, who were both first-generation college graduates. As a daughter of a father with a disability, there are things sometimes that we, as their children, would see that other people would not see. Some of the things that I have seen, when you talk about initiative, I'm here because I've taken the initiative. I'm humbled and grateful to have many of my mentors, some who are speaking for me today, one of which was here today, and coming up through prevention programs, and you don't get here by yourself, you have to be very uniquely prepared. Whether it was serving with Lutheran Social Services, Urban Spirit Coffee Shop, a highly-decorated coach in this district, the work I do at the Ohio State University in social change with our young people as they are forming their leader identity, I am ready for this moment to work alongside you. We have something that we talk about in basketball, and it came to mind, and it says, film doesn't lie. Last night, I spent a lot of time and fell asleep looking at the past ordinances. I watched the film. I even watched your kind words that you said to Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. There is only one Elizabeth Brown. But what I kept hearing you say was the word work. As I look back at the several council meetings over the past year in preparation, including committee meetings, I heard the word work, and what I think that you respect is work. I've done the work, I am prepared to work, and I will come in day one as a listener and a kind and compassionate champion to help you continue to move this city forward with innovation, purpose, and persistence. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Martin King. The final finalist to come before council this evening is Mr. Denzel Portius. Welcome back to council.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for the response. Appreciate it. My name is Denzel Portius. I use he, they pronouns, and I'm proud and excited to be here this evening. Quite honestly, I hadn't thought about what I was going to say. You know, for me, it was realizing and understanding that representation matters, and so when the opportunity came up, I stood up and said, yes, I'll give it a shot. But as I've been sitting here and listening to everyone, I realized that so much of what they've said in terms of service to the community, belief in what we should be doing and stepping up when we have the time, capacity, and ability to do so, I believe in that. I've had the privilege of interviewing a lot of people over my time, as a former admissions officer, as a manager of people, and I think the thing that we can see is always a resume, so hopefully my resume speaks for itself in relation to what I have done. But what we often cannot see and understand is the why behind someone. And so I'm going to share a little bit of my why. I am a first-generation American. I was born in Jamaica, West Indies. I came to America as a very young person. I moved to America with my mother and my three older siblings, single mother. My mother did not go to college. My mother did not finish high school. She did that as a single parent working in New York City. My mother passed away when I was 14 years old from HIV/AIDS. I had to move. I had to uproot my life. I had to change everything that I knew. As a queer, gay, black man growing up in New York, I had to pack up and move to Georgia. I spent some great formative years living in Atlanta, Georgia, and then I came to Ohio for college, and I found my home. Columbus has been my home since 1998. I left for a little while, went out to San Francisco, you know, sowed my oats, whatever they call it out there, and I had a phenomenal experience learning and living in a new and different city. But I came back to Columbus with a purpose and intent to help create a city, to help create a community that had given me so much love, that had allowed me to fail, fail fast, to grow, grow wonderfully, and so I came back to help create Columbus. I had the privilege of serving on the Create Columbus Commission on my return. I've had the privilege of working in higher education on my return. I've had the privilege of serving as executive director of Stonewall Columbus since 2020. I understand this city. I love this city. This is my home. I'm raising my five-and-a-half-year-old daughter here. I got married here to my partner in this city. Whatever I can do to ensure that this city continues to grow, to change, to evolve, to be what it should be as the 14th-largest city in the country, that is what I commit to do. So whether it be a minute, a year, or 20 years, I'm here to serve this city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, especially for all the folks that came here to support somebody, this is the time we get to like, let's clap for everybody who came before us. Certainly inspired by what we heard this evening, and I think it speaks to the caliber of the folks again who raised their hand to serve. We will now move into the public testimony portion of this hearing. Again, everyone will have the same three minutes to speak, and we just ask that you state your name, if you represent an organization, and provide your testimony. And with that, the first person on my list is a brand-new Senator, Michelle Reynolds.
Good evening, Council President. Thank you so much and members of council for the opportunity to speak in support of the nomination for Mrs. Charity Martin King to fill the vacancy on Columbus City Council. I am Senator Michelle Reynolds, and I have spent the last 25 years serving Columbus, Ohio as a nonprofit CEO and elected leader in Franklin County. In my time serving my community, I find that it is difficult to find compassionate people who are willing to lead from the front, roll up their sleeves, and do the actual work that protects freedom and opportunity for the underprivileged and underserved. On the rare occasion that I do lock arms with the caliber of leaders like Charity Martin King, it stands out to me, and I feel compelled to speak about what I believe makes her special. Mrs. Charity Martin King gives voice to the voiceless. As the co-founder of a nonprofit, an activist, and a social justice warrior, the impact that she has made as a private citizen shows that she goes above and beyond the call of duty. She has built a legacy as a caring, compassionate community leader who works tirelessly to uplift humanity and help young people become the best versions of themselves. Whether we're talking about working with young black girls that her nonprofit supports, the students at the Ohio State University, or the young lives that she has positively impacted by her leadership in the mayor's Office of Education, Columbus Youth Commission, it is clear that her dedication to our children needs to be replicated and expanded as a movement in the city of Columbus. Finally, she has integrity. People trust Charity, and not just because she talks the talk. She is a difference-maker, and she demonstrates that every single day. I have worked with her, I have watched her, and I have supported her, and I look forward to any opportunity to collaborate with Mrs. Charity Martin King and Columbus City Council as she continues to lead with purpose. Thank you for hearing my testimony. I am honored and confident that, given the opportunity, she will make Columbus proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator, and again, thank you for your service. I think, Senator, we're sworn in today, so we're really looking forward to serving with you. The next speaker to come before council is Dr. Toni Anderson. Dr. Anderson, welcome back to council. Dr. Anderson, welcome back to council. Dr. Anderson will be followed by Imran Malik.
Good evening, President Harden, members of council. My name is Dr. Tony Anderson, and it's my honor to advocate for Charity Martin King's consideration for the vacant City Council seat left by Elizabeth Brown. I've had the pleasure of knowing Ms. Martin King for the last 30 years and working collaboratively with her, and I cannot think of a person more uniquely qualified to represent the varied and growing interest of the people of Columbus. As a native of Columbus, I can personally attest to Ms. Martin King's unrelenting passion for the well-being of the city and its citizens. Simply put, Ms. King has put in the work, not for political gain, but because it was simply the right thing to do. Ms. King was born and raised here, and as such, she finds the successes of this city and its residents deeply personal. In her role as head basketball coach at Eastmore Academy, Ms. Martin King honed her communication and leadership skills, and, as anyone that has been a coach will tell you, if a team is going to be successful, mastering the art of communicating differently to different types of people is a requirement. In that role, Ms. Martin King was highly successful, leading her teams to four district championships and was a state runner-up in 2005. More importantly, 100% of her team received admission to colleges and universities, and 70% of those students matriculated. In her role as Director of Social Change within the Center for Belonging and Social Change at the Ohio State University, Ms. Martin King develops and provides programming to a wide constituency of stakeholders and underrepresented groups. In this capacity, her experience provides her with the perspective necessary to advocate and represent a wide array of constituents of this great city. Ms. Martin was the founder and owner of Urban Spirit Coffee Shop. As an entrepreneur and small business owner, she is both sensitive to and supportive of policy decisions that support the growth of this city. But she's also keenly aware of the impact of these policies and their implications on the historical, cultural authenticity and lived outcomes of those impacted by said policies. Ms. Martin King has demonstrated her commitment to service through her leadership as President of the Columbus Chapter of the National Panhellenic Council, which represents 14 alumni and graduate chapters of nine international Greek-letter sororities and fraternal organizations. It is through her leadership that the NPHC promotes cooperative programming and service initiatives that the community at large can benefit from. She is the author of the children's book, The Adventures of Bella and Her Basketball, which deeply was impactful to my eight-year-old daughter. In closing, Ms. Martin King is more than qualified for this role, and the city of Columbus would greatly benefit from her perspective, leadership, integrity, and commitment to excellence. She has done the work. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Anderson. Next speaker to come before council is Imran Malik. Mr. Malikus will be followed by Imam Horsed Noah.
Council Leadership and President Harden, thank you for this opportunity, for allowing me these three minutes to speak on behalf of Ilhan Daher. I have known Ilhan Daher for a long time, growing up as a Columbus youth, an advocate, an ambassador, and a leader and a role model, not only for the Muslim community children, but also for the community at large. I myself work across borders in building bridges, work in multicultural and multi-faith traditions of our beautiful city for the last 20 years, but today is not talking about myself, today I'll be focused on talking about the work, the potential, and the aptitude and the experiences that Ilhan can bring to the City Council in fulfilling the one-year term for Councilwoman Brown's tenure. Ilhan is a strong leader, a multicultural, multi-diversity-experienced young professional who has served in the public policy and advocacy work for the longest in the city of Columbus. She brings along the wealth of knowledge of how to build bridges, how to connect with people, especially the young generation of our community. She is a child of an immigrant family that moved to Columbus and has known the challenges that our immigration community is going through in this beautiful city of Columbus. Ilhan brings not only the multicultural and the multi-diverse aspect of connection, but also professionalism of her work, which was already awarded and recognized by the Obama administration and was recognized by the White House back in 2008 and 2012 timeframe. She has also interned with Senator Brown's, Senator Charity Brown's campaign, and has been worked very closely, not only with the central Ohio communities and constituents, but also constituents all over the state of Ohio. She brings along a lot of diverse and, you know, multilingual aspects in which how she can connect to people, especially, again, as I mentioned, the youth community. It is important to note that Ilhan brings exceptional experiences and knowledge to the position appointing her would be also a historic landmark for the city of Columbus. We all believe in diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we live and breathe that conviction and that compliment in our work of service on a daily basis. Ilhan is only going to supplement and complement that vision forward. She's a team player, which stands for together everyone achieves more, and she's also a proponent of her Faith in Action philosophy, of a diverse, multicultural diversity that exists in 1.2 million residents of central Ohio. Being the member and a product of the largest county in the state of Ohio, or the most populous county in the state of Ohio, she knows how to lead from front and also to connect with people, and leaving no child and no resident behind has been her philosophy in all her work that has been part of the Muslim community and also in the work that she has done with the community at large. It will be my deep recognition and honor to see Ilhan, a young leader, to be serving along with you folks on the council and making our city a bicentennial city, another anchor of success, hope, and visibility, not only for the state of Ohio, but for our nation. It is about time that the Muslim minority, which is one of the largest minorities in central Ohio, is also looked upon and reflected into the leadership, in the policy, in the decision-making of the city, and also in the state level as well. With that, I will leave, you know, my notes here that Ilhan is a great leader, and whether she is appointed to this position or not, she will continue to be a value-add catalyst and a service agent for our city and for our leaders ahead for now and in the future. Thank you for your time and for hearing me, appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Malik. Next speaker to be coming before council is Imam Horsed Noah. Imam is followed by Matt Kado.
Council President Harden, City Council members, and our esteemed community members. My name is Imam Horsed Noah, and I'm the Outreach Director of SICO Somali Islamic Centers of Ohio, which is an umbrella of seven mosques in central Ohio. I'm also a board member of Faith in Public Life, which is a national movement of clergy and faith leaders united in the prophetic pursuit of peace, justice, and the common good. I am here today to voice my strong recommendation for Ilhan Daher to fill the vacancy in the City Council seat. Ilhan is a community leader with the experience and the vision to serve the state of Columbus and contribute greatly to the work of the council. As a community organizer and expert analyst, Ilhan has already contributed to Columbus through the many initiatives she has begun, and the energy and the vision she has brought to her organizing work, teaching, and advocacy. Ilhan will bring a new perspective to City Council while also representing the Somali-American community that make up a cornerstone of our great city. Her work and credentials are extremely strong, as you all have seen on her impressive resume. However, what really sets her apart is her reputation on the international, national, and the citywide stage as an analyst with a vision for a good governance. She would bring those tremendous gifts to the council. Her expertise on human rights, digital diplomacy, civil liberties, and transformative leadership makes her an ideal and visionary leader for our growing city of Columbus. Ilhan is a first-generation immigrant woman who has broken many glass ceilings. She holds two master's degrees on the Rhodes Scholarship and was only the sixth OSU graduate to be awarded the prestigious award. She's a role model and a leader to her community and would greatly influence the work of the council and expand it. She's a baka'i and tireless advocate for the disenfranchised and the voiceless. She lives a life that aims to make Columbus great for all its residents. Thank you for the opportunity to hear my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Imam. Next speaker to come before council is Matt Kado, followed by Dr. Cheryl Lowry. Welcome to council.
Hello, President Harden, members of City Council. My name is Matt Kado, and I'm here to voice my support for Ilhan Daher for the City Council vacancy. Ilhan and I met at Ohio State, we both studied political science and were members of the Collegiate Council on World Affairs. Ilhan has always been a leader wherever she has been, and she has always inspired her peers. Ilhan's experiences prepare her to serve the city of Columbus well. She was on the Columbus Youth Council, which fostered a love for this city and a commitment to service. During her time at OSU as part of the Collegiate Council on World Affairs, she helped high school students around Columbus start model United Nations clubs in their schools and facilitated discussions on international relations for those kids. Ilhan worked on the Obama campaign as a campus liaison and registered thousands of students to vote. She organized across Ohio, addressing issues like student loan debt and the school-to-prison pipeline as a leader of the Ohio Student Association. Her graduate education at Oxford and her professional skills in human rights and international security offer a global perspective that perfectly matches the direction of the city of Columbus, a growing city that embraces diversity and is fueled by young people from all backgrounds. Ilhan's enthusiasm and ability to lead people of all ages will be a great asset for her service on City Council. Columbus City Council will benefit greatly from Ilhan's incredible experiences, her intelligence, and her commitment to service and community building. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. The next speaker to come before council is Dr. Cheryl Lowry. After Dr. Lowry, it'll be Jasmine Brown. Welcome to council, Dr. Lowry.
Hello, I'm happy to speak on behalf of Ilhan Daher's candidacy for membership on City Council. Ilhan was my student assistant at OSU Libraries for two years, from 2013 to 2015, in a program called A+ Research Presentations. She excelled by working very hard and by being smart and inventive, as she presented to about 1,600 students in groups of 5 to 60, depending on the setting. I was not surprised when Ilhan later won a Rhodes Scholarship, but I want to tell you what actually made Ilhan remarkable among my student assistants before and since. Immediately before coming to OSU Libraries in 2006, I had made my living for years, 12 years, as a mediator and trainer of mediators and win-win negotiators. Some of my cases were referred, for instance, from the Franklin County Court of Domestic Relations. Now, this is the remarkable part, I found that Ilhan, a college junior, knew as much as I did about helping people who don't understand or like each other very much work together. Knowing how to recognize and handle such opportunities was so thoroughly embedded in Ilhan as to look like instinct, but I found that it was her high school work with Nationwide Leadership Program called Faith to Faith that had produced such skill at negotiating to get things done. While in college, Ilhan continued working with that program as a counselor, and I watched her take every opportunity she had at OSU to work with people who were at odds. Students in dorms, students on committees, students who had religious differences, students who had differences with administrators. Ilhan helped them find ways to accomplish goals that were desirable to all sides. So I urge you to appoint Ilhan to the vacancy on City Council. You'll get someone who knows how to bring people together to problem-solve in these fractured times. You'll also have someone who doesn't seek undue recognition, who is willing to dive into the hard work on behalf of council and Columbus residents. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Lowry. Next speaker to come before council will be Jasmine Brown. Jasmine Brown will be followed by Angie Plummer. Welcome to council, Jasmine.
Good evening, my name is Jasmine Brown, I'm in 10th grade, and I attend Fort Hayes Metropolitan Education Center. I'm here to speak on the behalf of Charity Martin King. Ms. King, I was a part of her Lead with Purpose Summer Academy 2022. I have learned very valuable life lessons within this academy. I have met people such as black women entrepreneurs who have proven to me every single day why I need to keep going and push through. Ms. King has impacted a lot of young girls' lives, such as myself. I have learned very, very, very important stuff that I've never learned before, such as how to do a job application, which I've never done in my life. She has given us opportunities to meet people outside of the regular doctors and lawyers who have showed us how to do it and what to do. She has impacted a lot of us, like, really. It was 30 girls there, I have saw my life change after going through that program. I have saw, I did morning affirmations every single day there, and I've never done that before, and I continue to do that throughout my everyday life. She has impacted me seriously as a person. She has sat me down in rooms with people who I've never met before, never even knew existed, who are so important in society today. Also, she is very, very caring and very, very pushy, and I don't mean pushy in a bad way, I mean pushes you to do and be your best every single day, and for that, I say thank you to her. Without this summer program, my leadership skills would just have been basic, but they are beyond. I have learned how to carry myself as a young black lady in society today, and I've met very good people, and I have a very good sisterhood with the girls that I met there due to Charity Martin King's Summer Academy. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Good job. Next speaker to come before council is Angie Plummer. Angie Plummer will be followed by Dr. Tony Keckley. It's Angie Plummer in the audience. She's virtual.
President Harden?
Yes, welcome to council.
Right, members of council, Happy New Year to all of you. It is in my personal capacity and with the greatest enthusiasm that I speak with you about considering Ilhan Daher for appointment to Columbus City Council. I was very excited to see Ilhan shortlisted for consideration. I have known Ilhan's family for many, many years. I've watched with amazement Ilhan's trajectory from OSU Honor Student to Fulbright recipient and then to Rhodes Scholar. She has significant experience in policy analysis and work to advise governments and non-governmental entities. That her resume is impressive is an understatement, that she's extremely bright, thoughtful, and well-spoken, I'm sure you have already gathered. But in addition to the policy expertise she would bring to council, what I think is especially significant are her firsthand lived experiences as the child of refugees. significant are her firsthand lived experiences as the child of refugees, as someone who knows very well the challenges to adjusting to life in our city, whether it's the importance of economic development to bring stability, of public transportation to get to work, of the issues that directly face our sizable refugee and immigrant communities, and the importance of neighborhoods. As you all are well aware, Somali refugees have been coming to Columbus for over 25 years, and it's evident to me that Ilhan is extremely capable and competent. But representation matters. What an opportunity before you to appoint the first member of the Somali community, to appoint a Muslim woman to our City Council, someone raised in this city who has the capacity and the desire to serve her community and make a difference. I hope you will strongly consider her for appointment. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Plummer, for your testimony. Next speaker to come before council is Dr. Toni Keckley, followed by Kadra Mohammed. Welcome to council.
Hello, everyone. President Harden and Columbus City Council. Thank you so much for letting me come up here and give my testimony on Charity Martin King. My name is, like I said, Dr. Toni Keckley. I come to you from the city of Reynoldsburg. I am the Planning Commissioner and Planning and Zoning Commissioner appointed by Mayor Begging. I'm also the chaplain for the Police Department. And I'm here today to share my testimony clearly, as she is my Zeta Phi Beta sorority sister. She is hardworking in the community. She is a caring individual who has a passion for healing what is broken. She is a civic leader, and personally, I want you to know we have prayed together for our families, for the city, and for the state. She comes with a different approach to listening to those who feel unappreciated or the naysayers. She makes space for those who feel inappreciative. Much of who she is is fueled by the challenges to the status quo and demand the equitable accountability for change. I am sure you've read her resume, so I'm not going to go through her resume. But my experience comes with this analogy. She is the kind of quarterback who supports people who come to the table with issues and problems that the community is trying to solve. She is not trying to be the type of quarterback or running back whose single focus is herself. She is not looking to score for herself. City Council is like the running back, the tight end. You're like the receivers. You have a staff, which is your downliners, who can advance the ball to the community. Charity Martin King is here to help you score a touchdown in your community. Her ways of thinking will not stifle your ability to address the everyday issues that affect our communities successfully. Her approach is bold. She's unafraid, and she's not deterred on opposition. Still, she has proven record of working to address unfairness and injustice with our communities. When I say bold, what does bold leadership look like? Charity Martin King has a very sophisticated, intricate way dedicated through how to treat people, how to listen to people, and how to move forth and move the issues forward. She is a finalist today because she has created footsteps in leading this community. She is a finalist today because she has empowered Columbus neighborhoods with ideals of moving our communities forward. She is a finalist today because she has broke economic barriers around food insecurity. Finish it. Charity Martin King is a credible advocate for the City Council. In my final word, because of these attributes, what you have learned about her and her resume and through my testimony, she is up to the challenge, and she deserves a seat at the table with you on the City Council. Allow her dreams to come true. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker to come before council is Kadra Mohammed. Kadra would be followed by Mary Joen.
Council President, dear council members and all community members in attendance, my name is Kadra Mohammed. I'm a community leader and the president of Pushe Trust, a Columbus-based organization. I'm very grateful to call Columbus home and have had the opportunity to work with the city and state leaders in different capacities over the years that I have lived in Columbus. I'm the founder of the International Women's Day Celebration at Ohio State House, the first of its kind, the state of Ohio. As a result, in 2013, Columbus City Council passed a resolution to recognize Martha Hage a Day to Celebrate for Women's Achievement. I have received this resolution on behalf of Columbus women. Today, I'm here to give my strong recommendations for Ilhan Daher to fill the vacancy in the City Council. The Columbus City Council has a chance to make history today by appointing one of the most impressive and qualified candidates for City Council we have ever seen. Ilhan Daher has proven that she is right for this role through the community work that received a high honor from the White House, her internationally recognized policy analysis, and her major efforts to serve and mentor the youth of Central Ohio. Ilhan will be the first Somali Muslim woman in a council and will continue to represent her communities well while giving the council new perspectives, ideas, and experience. Ilhan is not only a leader in the national spotlight, but she's also a pillar of the Columbus community. Her work of mentoring the youth, creating academic enrichment programs, and leading community integration projects has made Columbus a better place to live and raise a family. As a teenager, she was the Columbus Youth Commission, where she began her interest and work in the local government. She has organized and led major voter registration drives to give every corner of Columbus community access to elections. Ilhan is a young leader with new ideas, strong experience, and connections to Columbus that make her perfect for the City Council. As the child of immigrants, Ilhan is committed to educational opportunities. During the pandemic, she created an advanced language arts and literature program for students at the West Academy. She has a gift for community building and has connected with diverse aspects of this city. Ilhan's many works include interface engagement, organizing around issues of economic and racial equity, advocacy for the disenfranchised, and embarrassment through voter registration. Ilhan is an important leader in our city and will contribute a lot to the work of the council. My last finish, I am almost done. Her rich experiences, sharp mind, and work in this city make her the ideal candidate for the Columbus City Council. I'm sure that Ilhan will bring fresh perspective, innovative ideas concerning housing, transportation, education, as well as years of experience to the role. It's time for Ilhan Daher to continue her work in Columbus through the City Council. Once again, this great city of ours, Columbus, Ohio, needs Ilhan.
Thank you. Thank you so much. The next speaker to come before council is Mary Joen. The next speaker after Mary Joen is Amina Bahumi. Ms. Amina will be followed by Chris Jackson, and that will be our final speaker. Welcome back to council.
Good evening, Council President Shannon Harden and members of the City Council. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Amina Bahumi. I'm here as the executive director of the Ohio chapter of the Council on American Islamic Relations Action Fund, so known as CARE Ohio Action Fund. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide testimony and to voice support, strong support, for candidate Ilhan Daher. A little bit of a background, CARE Ohio Action Fund is Ohio's only organization dedicated to amplifying the political power of Ohio Muslims and electing officials who are responsive to our needs. We empower marginalized communities, and we believe Ohio must lead the nation in social justice, criminal justice, and economic justice. Ilhan Daher, a Muslim Somali-American who graduated from OSU, and I'm going to spare you the list, she's recognizably very highly qualified candidate. She also has the practical experience. She's worked abroad. She has the rapport, and she's done the work of grassroots activism. Representation matters. I'm going to echo Angie a little bit earlier. Columbus is home to approximately 4,000 Somalis and is the second-largest population of Somalis in the U.S. In contrast, little Somali representation in public office positions, maybe with the exception of this morning at the State House. Representation matters, especially in providing insight on issues and addressing concerns and priorities of residents when forming legislation to build a stronger, welcoming Columbus. Columbus Muslim residents and marginalized community members in Columbus want to see officials who understand them and who reflect them. Homegrown talent matters. And as someone who works in this space to build young people, to be folks who are public servants as we build programs to be able to do that, rarely, and especially in Columbus, I see talent that goes off to the East Coast or to DC. These young people who choose, who want to stay, that matters. Ilhan Daher undoubtedly has the merits, the education, the skills, the grit, the vision, and the dedication necessary to be a leader and a servant for the diverse Columbus community. But she's also uniquely qualified and uniquely connected to engage and prepare the city for an upcoming election, and uniquely qualified to inform typically disengaged and disenfranchised community members into the fold and to propel them and the city forward. And so, we strongly urge Columbus City Council to nominate Ilhan for this position. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The last speaker to come before council this evening is Chris Jackson.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good evening. Definitely want to say thank you to Council President, as well as the rest of the members of council. I do apologize that I decided not to get in traffic and get stuck. I did just want to spend just a quick second to talk about Charity Martin King. When I hear the name Charity Martin King, I think of a civic leader, I think of a business leader, I also think of somebody that has a nonprofit background and mindset. Charity Martin King has, in the two and a half years that I have been engaged with her, she has shown proven leadership just based off of her engagement in the community as well as her engagement with the young people in this community. She has proven time in and time out that she is committed to the city of Columbus. There have, has been multiple times in which I have known that she has been able to be pulled elsewhere, but because of how strong of an achiever she is, I think that she keeps her mindset here in Columbus. And I think that when we look at who, you know, the candidates are, I think that Charity Martin King shows that she will be able to bring the servant leader that I think council needs instead as we await for election time. But I think that the one thing that I want to make sure that people understand about Charity is that she has the heart for the people, that she has the heart for this community, but she also has the mindset to be able to lead. And so, as we are looking for a leader to fill Councilwoman Brown's spot, I think that Charity Martin King is that person. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jackson. Thank you all for participating this evening. I think hearing you speak on behalf of the finalist helps give context to my colleagues and I as we deliberate. That's going to bring it into this evening's hearing. And again, I think it was a very, it showed us, again, the caliber of folks who raised their hand to serve our community. All seven of the folks that we've heard from, the information that we've received on our first, on Alabandi, Abami, these are all folks who could and are willing and are able to serve. Council now has the hard responsibility of seeing who is best to fill in the specific criteria that we need for the next 12 months, and that is a tough, tough challenge for us to consider. So this will conclude tonight's hearing. We will, I'd also like to note that some members of the public did submit written testimony, and that written testimony will be distributed to all the council members for their consideration. The next and final step of this process will be on Monday, January 9th, at 5:00 p.m. during the regular council meeting, where council will vote to fill the vacancy. The council member that is voted on next week will be seated on January 30th. It will be their first meeting. Again, council members shall nominate applicants for the vacancy and vote to appoint a new member. So at this time, actually, before we go into executive session, this might be the last time we get to talk to the public. Does any council member want to close this out or have any other comments before we go to executive session? All right. At this time, council will go to executive session. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here. So it's back on the record for the public hearing. Are there any other items to come before council at this time? See ye none. The public hearing is concluded. Have a good evening, everyone. So it's back on the record for the public hearing. Are there any other items to come before council at this time? See ye none. The public hearing is concluded. Have a good evening, everyone.